King George County School Board Regular Meeting, March 9th, 2020 to order. We have the Pledge of the Legions by the King George High School Cadet Program.
Attention. Start with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you to take your seats?
Aye.
Uh, I don't know. Okay, did you guys want to come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Cadet Commander Gillian Yee.
You can use the microphone, if you'd like to use the microphone.
I'm Cadet Lieutenant Washington.
Cadet Petty Officer First Class Brown.
Cadet Seaman Smith.
Cadet Petty Officer Third Class Caldwell.
Cadet Lieutenant Devlin.
Cadet Seaman Apprentice Paluzak.
So can you briefly explain the rankings, because we had Seamans, Lieutenants, Commanders?
Uh, we go by the Navy's ranking system. These Seaman Crews, Seaman Apprentice, Seaman, uh, all just Cadets in the high school.
So what grade are you guys in?
Uh, I'm a junior.
I'm a freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
I'm a junior.
I'm a sophomore.
Freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
Great. So how many of you guys are planning on going into the Navy when you get out of high school? Just raise your hand. Awesome. Still undecided, that's good.
I'm gonna go in the Army. Alright. You guys always make us very, very proud. All the events that you go to and you represent King George, you do an absolutely spectacular job. And I thank you for that. And you all, always look forward to seeing you all at these events and, and showing us your stuff. So, thank you and stand tall.
Thank you, sir.
We're also very grateful that you all are there to be role models for our younger folks who are looking at this at the middle school. And we're so excited about the planning for that program. So encourage the younger folks that you come in contact with and tell them how great it is.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
On behalf of the King George County.
Awesome.
The ball.
It went in the ball?
Yeah. Haven't missed one yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's very nice.
You guys are welcome to stay and hear the rest of the meeting if you'd like. Thanks for coming out, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, at this time I'd like to recognize our student representatives. Chad Brown from King George Middle School. And Troy Spillman from King George High School. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate it. At this time, we have our recognition from Virginia School Board Association Equity and Education Month. We'll read the certificate very quickly. Do we have it online? Do you have it on the screen? The certificate. Okay, this is a certificate of recognition by virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia. There is hereby officially recognized Virginia School Board Association Equity and Education Month. Whereas inequities in schools have become an increasingly significant challenge in the United States and Virginia. And whereas the majority of the school age students are children of color and in Virginia, forty-five percent of public school students qualify for subsidized meals. And whereas we recognize that factors including, but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socio-economic status have a demonstrated history of impacting the educational opportunities provided to a student. And whereas the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life. And whereas it is important for Virginia families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community. And whereas the Virginia School Boards Association has established a task force on students in schools in challenging environments to make recommendations and to stay at the forefront of discussions on equity in Virginia schools. And whereas we recognize the inequities and resources, including educational settings and buildings, supplies and technology, impede student learning. Now therefore, I Ralph S. Northam do hereby recognize March 2020 as Virginia School Board Association Equity and Education Month and our Commonwealth of Virginia. And I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Signed by Governor and Secretary of the Commonwealth. Uh, the next recognition we have is the King George Education Foundation donor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Perrine is here with us this evening. Mr. Perrine recently made a very generous donation to the King George Education Foundation on behalf of his wife. And I want to read just a few words. Billy Perrine came into this world named Wilhelmina, but was forever known as Ms. Billy to her students. She graduated from Mary Washington College, married, and moved to King George where she began her career as an educator. She taught at Potomac Elementary School, the AMEAAS School for Girls, and years later taught for and directed the Early Learning Center preschool with our own Ms. Gail Hawke. Her two sons graduated from King George High School and have become successful parents and citizen. Billy was always smiling with a twinkle in her eye. And she left this world a better place for having been here. Mr. Perrine, I know to speak for many current and future students who will benefit through the King George Education Foundation for your very generous donation in her name. And we appreciate you and wanted to recognize you. Thank you, would you like to say? We have just a little recognition and this is for you. This is awarded to Fred Perrine for generous and lasting contribution to the King George County Schools through the King George County Education Foundation awarded this ninth day of March 2020. Mr. Perrine, thank you again. And I'll note that Mr. Perrine is also going to be recognized at our annual King George Education Foundation Excellence in Education Night. But we did want to come to you and thank you very much and.
Well, I'm glad I could do it.
We appreciate it.
Sure, it'll go for a good cause.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. That'd be great. I like pictures.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, do we have any public or employee comment? Nope, okay, thank you. We can move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the February 13th, 2020 special meeting, the February 24th, 2020 public hearing on the FY221 budget record meeting, the February 13th, 2020 special meeting, and the February 27th, 2020 special meeting.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion moves the consent agenda, the minutes are approved. Next to move on to the action item, 21 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our draft budget has been before you. We appreciate your good work in helping us get to this point. I brought you up to date last meeting with just some good news. And that is the General Assembly appears to be headed towards amendments to the Governor's proposed budget that would increase revenue from the state to our locality. That, of course, would have an inverse effect on the local amount needed to make our budget whole, meaning that it would be, it would, it would require less local money, which is always a good thing for our local taxpayers. There were just a few corrections that I summarized as far as differences between draft one and this point. Just corrections with the, that I summarized for you in an earlier email. But we did correct a few figures associated with stipends. We associated, we had some corrections to make. The formula did not pick up three employees as far as increases that we are proposing for all employees. And finally, I've added a little bit to the utilities amount because we will have increased square footage with the middle school. And we, we've attached, or we've annually looked at a 3% increase in utility usage and making sure we're governing that cost. We had originally put 2.1. We had actually attached the first draft to this Consumer Price Index. We believe it's probably more prudent, or I believe it's more prudent to go with the 3% we've done in the past to make sure that we don't run short in terms of utility costs next year. But that, wanted to summarize that so the public knows why there was a slight difference between the two drafts. But the draft you have before you this evening for consideration, if you were to approve, that would then advance to the Board of Supervisors. March 18th is the proposed date they have issued to me for our annual joint meeting with them so they can receive your budget request, consider it, and then inform you as to their ability to fulfill that budget. And then we'll go from there. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this point. Again, the revenue picture, we just have to wait until the General Assembly completes their work. They're right now in conference between the two houses. They'll emerge with their final compromised proposed amendments, send that back to the Governor for his signature, and then we'll, we'll receive the calculation sheet to be able to finalize the revenue side of it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed 2020-21 budget. You can do it during discussion. 2021 budget, fifty-five million, nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Yes, ma'am. I'd have two, what I think are probably quick questions. One is a very small, tiny item that I couldn't find in the technology budget as to whether the earbuds for the students were included in the supplies.
We're continuing to price it and find the best price, but we would have the ability to do that as far as.
Grades.
Our elementary students, I believe.
Elementary?
Yes.
At this point, okay, great. I'm delighted to hear that, thank you. And the second was, would you clarify the change for the sick leave and retirees?
Clarify or re-explain?
Sure. Whichever is shorter.
Well, I can give you the Reader's Digest version. I mean, I want to refer everybody back to when I presented it and had the slides available to kind of illustrate. But conceptually, Ms. Hawke, what we were looking to do is within, you know, generally the same amount that we budget each year for unused sick leave payout for retirees. We were looking for options that may help our retirees better leverage those payout dollars. And we, I presented a comparison slide from, with other localities. And it was evident that we fall short in terms of being comparable with other divisions in terms of paying out unused sick leave for retirees. So we are proposing then for up to, and make sure I get this right, Ms. Zierzki, she helped as a, as a co-engineer of this. For up to five years, we were looking at a hierarchy of, depending on the number of days, unused sick leave days you had, you would qualify for a certain number of months, maxed out at five years' worth, of three hundred dollar a month subsidy to reduce your premium in retirement for the individual plan. So right now, was that six hundred and, for an individual? Do you remember offhand? Premium, mhm. Okay, so let's say for, for just illustration purposes, if it were six hundred dollars a month for the individual to remain on our school insurance, employees have their premiums subsidized by the school board. Retirees currently do not, they pay the entire premium. So we were looking for, instead of taking a lump sum cash payout of up to, what was the max? Three, two? Three thousand, which would be taxed, that they could instead choose to take a monthly benefit to reduce their premium by three hundred dollars. And again, that premium, or that reduction would occur in relation to how much unused sick leave they had. There was one final requirement, and that was, there was.
We did buy our student policy that we have now. To qualify for that student payout now, we have to be here five years. You have to be with us for five years to be eligible for the.
So I'll quickly just repeat that. We have repeat, so by policy, for those that are listening at home, by policy then, you would need five consecutive years of service to qualify for this as a King George County Schools employee. Does that help clarify? Okay. And I do plan after the board, this board approves the budget to be represented at Board of Supervisors, I do plan to go to each school or to offer for employees an opportunity to hear me present what I've presented to you. And that'll give them another chance to clarify if they'd like. Yep?
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion's carried forward. The FY21 budget has been approved. Move on to the discussion items. We have the 2021 Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, flow-through, application and report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Each year, you know, we come before you. And for federal funds through the different title programs, the state requires that local school boards assure that the funding that is then provided for a local division is spent according to the guidelines for that program. So you're, as a school board, we do need your approval of the plan as an assurance to the state that the funds will be spent correctly. This is an annual occurrence. We have, Ms. Bush is here. We, I know the SEAC Committee, which is an advisory committee to the board, did hear this, presented to them, was it last night? Or when was your?
Last Monday.
Last Monday. And so this comes to you for your consideration and approval. That way we can again, collect federal funds under Title 6B to help support the delivery of service to our services of, to students who have special needs. So, any questions you may have this evening? I know Ms. Bush is here, she's happy to answer.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the Special Education Annual Part B Flow Through Plan, Application and Report, I'm sorry. We go ahead and approve that tonight, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
I have a question, sorry. Is that appropriate? I'm losing my voice, sorry. So the, I was wondering if the, so if the special ed positions, I don't know who the question struck at, you or Ms. Bush or Dr. Benson? The special ed positions listed in the budget proposal? So like, the needed positions like the special ed teacher at the high school or the middle school, are those included in the funds, like proposed as a part of the application request?
Yes.
So, so those, these positions that are called out here, all of those, that funding comes from this grant?
Those listed in the plan would come from that grant, yes. But the, the, both the revenue, this is one source of revenue under the federal grants. So the positions are listed in the budget and then funded through that revenue.
In their entirety, so all of those positions are funded from the funding in that grant?
Eleven teachers and two girls, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you.
My part of the discussion item is, there's a motion on the table. This is a first reading and it was a motion for approval and it shouldn't be in the action item for the next time.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, Chair votes aye, motion's approved. The next discussion item is a 2020 VSBA Business Honor Roll.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Each year, your organization, the Virginia School Boards Association, coordinates a recognition program for local businesses and organizations that, that do a good bit of work to help support local schools. So this year, I've canvassed, the principals asked for their suggestions. There are three local organizations, or organizations that serve us locally that we'd like to recommend. The first is Campbell's Vending Company that works with the high school. We'd also like to recognize Life Point Church and the King George Family YMCA. So there's a limit to three that we can nominate each year. We've participated in this for the last several years. But these are the three organizations that I would recommend to you for consideration, for recognition through the Virginia School Boards Association Business, Local Business Honor Roll.
Is churches considered a local business?
We did clarify with Virginia School Boards Association, they said yes. All of these organizations that I've mentioned to you qualify.
Do we have like a paragraph of information or something about their contribution?
I do not have a paragraph of information about them.
Could we prepare one, is that, that's?
We could, yes, absolutely we could. And, you know, I assume that if you all approve and it goes to VSBA, then we'll have an opportunity then to bring them to a board meeting in the future. And at that time, we could certainly highlight to a greater extent their contributions when we award them the recognition certificate from VSBA.
Okay, I don't have a question, I guess maybe a comment like to that. I guess I was wondering the same thing, if there was like a, you know, a paragraph justifying it? Is there value like in the future of bringing that to the meeting? So as a part of this, we say why they were nominated for?
Sure, I can do that. I can still do that. It's, we have time if you want to wait until the next meeting, I believe, don't we, Ms. Bush? So if you'd like to wait, I could bring you a paragraph next time if you want, for those three.
Okay.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Alright, we'll move on to the information items, on to committee reports. Ms. Gonzalez, do you have any committee reports?
I do not.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes, I do. I attended the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School meeting last week that had been postponed from, from the week before due to the weather issues. It's always a wonderful, interesting meeting. We, it was, it was a short meeting, which really was about the budget and activities coming up, the events coming up. And the presentation of the students' activities was last Saturday. I was not able to attend. But it, as I think Mr. Collins has been before and always finds it interesting and exciting. So I'll look forward to working with this group again and let you know more.
Mr. Collins?
I have none.
Ms. Tolliver?
I do. I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting last Monday, SEAC. We had a great turnout, families, children, we had pizza. It was a really great meeting. There was a speaker from VDOE, Virginia Department of Education, Tracy Lee, who presented a grant that they worked on to prepare a training for parents of special needs students. And they use this critical decision points for families of children with disabilities, which goes through a whole litany of time-sensitive things that parents need to do to get their child where they need to be transitioned from high school to adulthood. So they do a four and a half hour training, we just had an overview of it. We had parents there that were interested. There are trainings being held all over the state. It seems to be very well received, so we're hoping that some of our parents will also attend in the future.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Ms. Tolliver.
Ms. Tolliver, where can parents pick up that brochure if?
You have them?
At, at your office?
School Board Office?
That's good.
Right next, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Just a quick, a quick, couple of quick items. First, I want to remind the board that we have coming up, I mentioned already, the March 18th joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. The very next night, remember, is the VSBA Eastern Region Forum. That's at Essex High School this year at 6:00 PM. So the boards from our region come together for an evening of celebration of our students' artwork and for, to hear a speaker. So just a reminder about that meeting coming up. Also want to congratulate our King George High School Band. Our band, you know, it is, it is high festival season for our musical organizations. And as a former director, I can tell you, it is high stress season for our, our directors. But once again, they are representing us proudly. I believe our choir, the high school choir is on its way. The middle school, I know they go as well Thursday, it's coming up. But I know that our high school band came back and for the sixth time, it was announced today, they are a Virginia honor band. So congratulations to all those students, the directors, and the families. Remember, it takes practice to be that good. And practice at home can sometimes be noisy, but that's okay, it's beautiful noise. That's right. And I'll just conclude, we continue to, I know that our nation and our community remains concerned and we remain vigilant as far as the coronavirus. We've had a good deal of communication and we continue to have fluid communication with our local Department of Health, with the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education. So Friday afternoon, I had a conference, another conference call. So we continue to be in contact with one another as far as, you know, sharing information and preparing as best we can, working with contingency planning, that type of thing. So just want to assure our community that we are communicating, we are working on contingency plans based on, on what occurs. And we just have to remain vigilant in terms of minimizing, you know, good cleaning procedures, good hygiene procedures at our schools, which are being reinforced. And then we, again, will remain in close contact with our local Department of Health to exchange information as we need to, should there be any other reaction that we need to give. That would be prudent. So I appreciate everybody's understanding, everybody's concern, and everybody's vigilance in staying healthy. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. I'd like to move on to board comment, Mrs. Gonzalez? Or I'm sorry, let's go to the student rep. Chad, how you doing?
Good, good evening. So what I have from KGMS is on March 4th, we had our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony. So what I have from KGMS is on March 4th, we had our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony. Thirty-one students were inducted. And also on that day, we had 20 students representing KGMS at the Piedmont Regional Science Fair. Spring sports are currently underway. Baseball and softball have a scrimmage Tuesday, and track tryouts started today. We have spirit this week to, for our assembly on Friday, and the theme is SOS, Spotlight on Students. We'll be having numerous student groups performing, such as the guitar students and performances from our choir. We will have games in between each performance provided by the leadership class. And we want to invite you guys to that. If you guys want to come out, it starts at eight, and it probably ends around like 10 or 11? 10. Seventh grade has a field trip coming up. Each science teacher has a select date, so it's like various dates. They'll be going to our naval base down in Dahlgren. All the seventh graders are really excited for that field trip. King George Middle School has partnered with Complete Count Committee to help the KGMS students to have a better understanding of the census. We have been asked to develop some activities to encourage behavior for the census. We have a video and a crossword to hopefully encourage students to tell their parents about it. We also have a fun guessing game for our students that one of our leadership students came up with. The KGMS will, students will be guessing how many students are in our school as a fun little way to get them like, to know what, understand what it is. And that's all that's currently going on there. Thank you.
Dr. Spielman?
So The Little Mermaid will be at King George High School, April 29th to May the 2nd. Those are always great. You guys should definitely come out. I won't be able to be there because I will be with our DECA chapter down in Nashville for ICDC. Our DECA chapter competed at states last weekend. We will have a delegation of five students representing King George at ICDC in Nashville, two of which will be competing in the SBE competition, two participate in the Thrive Academy, and I will participate in the Elevate Academy as an incoming state officer. Because this past weekend in Virginia Beach, I was elected to Virginia DECA State Officer. Region 3 Vice President. So from just below Loudon down to around Tappahannock is my region. And then 93 students in the economics and personal finance classes participated in finance camp down in Richmond today. Our hosted chapter competes at states this coming weekend. And lots of student volunteers got to come out and help us at the home show this past weekend. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Can I ask?
Oh, yes.
More question? Can you tell me about what, what the 93 students who participated in Richmond, what that was? Personal finance competition or conference or what?
So we have our economics and personal finance classes at the school. So they took a field trip down to Richmond today, and it was like a finance camp. So they got to learn about all different kinds of financial things.
Who sponsors that, I wonder?
Ms. Strauss was there. That's, I know that.
I'll find out for me.
Yeah. I'm not sure, but.
Thank you.
Okay, so as far as comments for me, I guess I have a couple of things. Number one, so I know we keep the topic of the Potomac Elementary, the trailers that have come up. I know folks ask about what the status of that is. I thought perhaps we could consider adding that as an agenda item the next meeting or any, unless there is an update on that?
Not an update, but it is going to come to you in the form of the CIP.
Okay.
When that comes. So it will be, in a roundabout way, it'll be an agenda item. It'll be embedded in that agenda item for your consideration and discussion.
Okay, okay. Is that, when, when is that presented as a part of the budget in general? Is it a different process?
Right about now is when I usually get the memo from the county.
Okay.
To then begin soliciting requests from the different departments and the schools. It's, it's usually right after the operating budget season. Then they, they begin considering capital requests.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my second comment, I was, I've been like noodling over some thoughts, I guess. And I was wondering if there was a way that we could think about just getting general feedback from the community on topics other than budget things? So like maybe, I kind of was like just talking about this out loud the other day. I didn't know if we've ever done like a climate survey for parents or anything. I know I was thinking back to when I attended the Title I advisory meeting. I know they got really good feedback from parents that, like on finding out things about how well they understand the programs, that sort of thing. I guess, I mean, I'm familiar with the elementary schools at this point in time, since my son's in kindergarten. I'm sure parents at other, like other ages have things. I was just, I mean, things like, like getting feedback on how people feel about the communication from the schools or the transportation or just, you know, just, I have a list of things I could go through. But I was wondering if, if A, that has ever been done, or if that is something we could consider talking about in the future?
Certainly, it's, you know, it's up to you all as far as consideration. I know that as part of the advanced ed accreditation process, we did have to, well, we didn't have to, we had to, but it was part of that process required that we then issue surveys. We had to have a certain response rate at that time. Now, albeit, that's been two, three years ago. So, you know, any additional survey, it's up to you all. We'd be happy to help support that effort if it would be helpful to you.
Okay.
There are a variety of surveys that happen from time to time, and I'm looking at Mrs. Doddridge because we used to participate in the, the, both the regional and a statewide survey by the Division of Health on various student issues. And I think that was only at the middle school. Is that correct, Ms. Doddridge? Are we still participating in that? She's nodding her head, yes. So I, I think there are various surveys that go on, but, and yes, we've had school-wide surveys in the past.
I know Mary Fisher's sent out a number of surveys to families.
Yeah, there is. And I think the one you're referencing, Ms. Hawke, I think we still, you know, there's a sampling, that type of thing. I don't know if that, we can try to get that and see if the, you know, I guess it begins with the purpose and what would be the questions and how would then the responses be useful in terms of, to make sure we had the correct, we were asking the correct questions to get the data that you all would use.
That's very much oriented to student mental health and issues around that particular age group, perhaps.
ECGS survey, yep.
Okay, so it sounds like perhaps there are a number of surveys out there. I know, I mean, I think definitely, you know, parents of, kindergartners have different concerns than those of, you know, or I would say like elementary school versus middle school versus high school. So maybe would it be, could we get maybe a, like a, like a list or something of the surveys that do go out? And then we could maybe talk about if there were other, like any gaps of, like areas of students and families that aren't surveyed? Is that something we could, I don't know, can I, what do I do, propose to put that on a future agenda as a agenda item? Okay.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
I don't have any comments other than to share an article that was in our District Administrator Magazine that, that I think we get, and I'll make copies and maybe put it on our, on my Facebook page. But it talked about 11 ways for leaders to unschool school. And take, and it's around taking a student-centered approach to creating buy-in from students. And it, it's, you guys, I think, will be very interested in, in some of the ideas because it, it, it's asking students to lead students and to lead us in leading the students. So I encourage, it's called, well, it's in our District Administrator Magazine, but I, I try to make copies and share it with you all.
Mr. Collins?
Just two comments. One, every year, we, we approve the Roberts Rules of Order and the agenda. We have items that come up for discussion, and it's prudent that we discuss the items and then we have them in action on the next meeting. So we can get feedback from our constituents. I would suggest to the board that we continue that, that what we have agreed to do. And I apologize for not being at the Board of Supervisors meeting on March 18th. I'll be on a cruise and I won't be available, so I apologize now. Taking chances.
Tolliver? I just want to make a comment that I, I want to thank Dr. Benson and his staff for all the due diligence and hard work that they put in with the budget. I think that, you know, it's, it's a very sound budget, and I'm very hopeful that when we present it on the 18th that we're going to get some good feedbacks and support from the Board of Supervisors. So thank you very much for that. Also, Ms. Gonzalez brings up some, some pretty good ideas and wanting some further input. One of the things that we had done in the past is having a to-do list, which one of our past board members had introduced, and it tended to get a little bit at length. But I'd like to re-bring that back at a smaller scale so that we can put things like Mrs. Gonzalez's concerns with it and make sure that, you know, we actually move forward on those. So, yeah, I think, and there's some other things I know that we talk about, and then sometimes it, it kind of falls off. We forget there's time period between the board meetings and stuff, so just keeping up with that. But I'll work with Dr. Benson, and we'll see if we can get something that's, I mean, the past board member did a great job. I don't want to say that it was, you know.
Things didn't get taken off.
It didn't get taught, yeah. So, so we're just going to work it to simplify it a little bit so that things like these don't, don't get, don't get lost. Okay. Do I have a motion to go into closed meeting?
Make a motion pursuant to State Code Section 2.2, 3711, Point A, Point 1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignments, substitutes, stipends, retirements, resignations, and termination of employees of the school board.
Any discussion? We're now in closed session?
King George County School Board returned to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which to close the meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second, certify.
Certify.
Certify. Chair votes certify. We are now back in open session. Action resulting from closed session. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion move forward.
I second. I'm trying to get quicker.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. We are now-